Call a meeting to order, all roll call please.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes, here.
Counselperson McGinty.
Right here.
Counselperson Brenney.
Here.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Counselperson Bruni.
Okay, um, do any of you have any conflict of interest on any of the on the agenda?
No.
Okay, Steve, welcome.
Yep.
If you have any comments on the agenda, feel free to make them, and if you don't have comments on the agenda but you have something else on your mind, it's item number four tonight, citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. With that, we'll move on to consent agenda, number three, A, approval of agenda, B, approval of the minutes of the November 12th council meeting, consideration, C, consideration of approving Sac City Main Street parade permit for Sac City Chamber Main Street on December 4th, 2014, D, receipts and disbursements.
Should we remove item B since we don't have the minutes to approve?
Yes. I simply suggest that you approve, you recommend approval.
I recommend approval of the consent agenda deleting B, approval of the minutes of the November 12th, 2014 council meeting, since they are not available to the council members.
I'll second it.
No, I didn't, I recommended, I can't make the motion.
Oh, okay, I'll make the motion, I was thinking Bruce.
I'll second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve consent agenda with the removal of B, approval of minutes of the November 12th, 2014 council meeting. Is there any other questions or comments? Call for a vote.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Item number four then is citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda.
I got a couple things, it goes along, starts out with the parade, of course, we'll be lining up to parade at South 12th at approximately 5:30, parade will kick off at 6:00. We're hoping to have about 20 entries, as of the last time I checked, we had about 14. Hopefully, we can get things work around, that Santa will be at C's for pictures, I'm not sure if that's been finalized yet.
Yeah.
Has the location been finalized yet?
As far as I know.
Okay. Avenue of Lights at Chautauqua Park will kick off that night, a lot of people have got their posts in, displays are starting to go up that same evening. We're hoping to have a donation box down there this year to defray some costs. I would like to thank the city for all that they've done for us here this fall and today again, working on the lights on the buildings and things like this, getting the Christmas decorations up and everything.
I apologize, I tried sending you a text back twice and both times it said it couldn't deliver it.
I don't know why, I'm having problems with my phone and with not Matt here, I don't have time to go someplace and get it figured out. Maybe I need to talk to you since I know you have an iPhone too. Or also.
Or an iPhone 6, maybe.
Yeah, I guess the other thing that's, that I'm just kind of talking about from the chamber, being the past president last year, is, Brandi was on vacation last Friday, was her last official day with us, we have come up with a plan to move forward, I guess, in a committee type approach for right now. Ads have gone out in different newspapers and around, I'm not sure if we've received any kind of resumes back yet.
I talked to Bobby today, she said she started receiving some.
Okay, cool, and I guess, like I just told Adam, that elections for the board is in the December meeting, 2nd Tuesday of the month, and then officers will be elected in January, and I know we've had some discussions, I don't know how far they've gone with the council in pertaining to the chamber director, but possibly we may need some help in that regard, but like I said, a big thank you for everything what you guys have done for us this past year.
On another note, Steve, I received a visit from Scott Bunt on the board, and he had talked to me about permission to transfer the phone to us, I told him that that was fine, however, I do know that as of today, I called the chamber number to test it, and it, the answering machine answered and said that if, you know, no one answered, that you could call Bobby's cellphone, so I don't think it's been transferred at this point since it didn't read on back.
It might not, I know that once Scott got to you, he was going to deal with Bobby, and Bobby is the only one with the key, so.
Yeah, and honestly, if you do or don't, you know, that's fine with us, it's just.
I don't know if he had asked you also, Adam, here, I think we're going to leave a key for the office at here, and if there would be some way that we're going to leave a list of people who we feel can use the key.
Sure, that'd be fine.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Steve.
I take it you want, you want us for the parade, right?
Please, 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 I didn't know if we, if we went to you or.
Yeah, usually come to me.
To the sheriff's, sir.
What's that?
We didn't know if we had to go to the sheriff's department.
Nope, it's insane, we take care of it.
I don't know if you have it on the list, but I plan on having it float.
Okay.
I plan on it.
Okay.
Okay, okay, if there's nothing else on item number four.
Along those, I mean, the parade of light, the lights on here, I know we talked at one time about the city doing something down there, are we?
Yeah, well, what I told Barb, we've ordered one, they put us on back order, if, if we don't receive it in the next week, we have plans in place to do something.
Okay.
For the year, so, one way or the other, we'll be involved.
Right, just was, I know we talked about it, hadn't really heard.
Well, what we discovered was is buying the larger type of entryway lighting systems, those are the sold out ones, those are the ones that are difficult to get, because you're wanting one large enough that you don't have to worry about any type of car having a problem going through it, so they have to be a bit on the larger size.
Okay.
And I don't know if you've been down there, we've got the majority of the sponsorship signs up, but I think we're waiting for nine from the sign shed, I think it's called, Brent.
Okay, and we'll move on then to item number five, continuing business, is A, urban development area.
We were invited by Renell Drake, the supervisor in charge this year, to be at their meeting this morning, they were going to have some kind of response for us, their communication back to us was a green light, and we can start to draft up final documentation to put the urban development area in place, and our goal is, is to, for us to have something before us in January, early in January, so we can present it to the supervisors later in January, and by the end of January, potentially have the urban development area all worked out.
Bruce and I and Adam attended, and we were, we were very well received by the supervisors, and so it seemed like a real atmosphere of cooperation, so really look forward to working with them on that. Yeah, there was, I mean, almost more willingness to cooperate and go further than I had ever hoped, and they had looked into some, you know, trying to get rights to buy property or some of those kind of things that I would have thought had kind of the snowball's chance of, in the middle of July, and it was exciting.
Okay.
You know, they did not indicate any, that's just one of the options open to us, there was no commitment whatsoever on purchaser option to buy, but it's one, it's.
But the thing we're discussing that I thought was really, was really great, and actually taking initiative on their own to consult with realtors and those kind of things, I thought that was fabulous.
Okay, and we are to six miscellaneous, A is consideration of resolution number 2014-22, a resolution approving the 2014 fiscal year finance report.
This is typically the first step in the audit process, this, these numbers are for last year that concluded on June 30th, basically, the main point to recognize in the, in the fund status is, is that you will see the total actual line, is probably what interests you the most, you'll see the beginning fund balance stays was 1.87 million, the final fund balance state was 1.06 million, primarily, your largest impact there was the, was the improvements to Highway 20 that were done, which impacted that fund almost 500, you know, that's about 500,000 of that overall impact right there.
Do you council people have any questions? Oh, did we, did I skip it?
No, it was part of the consent agenda, you approved it as part of the consent agenda.
Yeah, it was.
Sorry.
Disregards.
So, if you have any other particular questions, I'll be happy to answer them, you'll see this again and at least one more time as we get into more detail with the auditor sometime in March or April at that time, but at this point, this is her initial findings based upon the information, the initial information we delivered to her, this is required to be completed in the month of November, printed in the paper by the end of November, which of course it was printed in today's paper, the preliminary report was, once it's approved, I then submit it to the Department of Management for approval purposes, which they want that by, it's due by December 1st.
So on the bright side, it looks like we had about 100,000 more in revenue than we budgeted for?
Uh, yes, correct.
And we had about 100,000, 180,000 plus less in expenses than we budgeted for?
Which is pretty, as you'll see year over year, is pretty indicative of my budgets, I usually am very conservative when it comes to expectations on revenue, and somewhat liberal in my expectations of expenses as a double insurance, however, I will point out that you'll notice that between what was total actual and what was budgeted, we were over in two line items particularly, one was, we were over in the case of, oh, let me find it real quick and.
Debt service was over.
Debt service would be over by a whopping $501, but that's still over, and then you'll see capital projects was significantly under, but business activities was over, the change there is, is that every time they have a recommendation on making some changes to the budget, I can already tell you that will be the basis of one of the recommended changes she makes, I'm reporting certain things under the capital project that she wants me to report under the business type activities, so I will be making that change in this coming year's fiscal budget as a result of this.
So where does our money that we've spent on the facade project come out of, is that out of capital projects, is that out of business type?
Well, for this budget, you would have only a very small amount because it would have been through June, so you're only talking in the neighborhood of about $20,000, where it would show on this budget is it would show in the case of the general fund, and particularly under the general fund, it will fall under general government, and then what happens is, is that at the end of the year, we transfer funds in to cover, offset the cost from other fund sources, for instance, right now, all of those forwarding loans that we're doing for the private portions and the grant portions, the grant portions are usually paying within six to eight weeks, so we're doing those somewhat internally on a short-term basis. The private investment, since none of that's been getting returned to us, the plan is, is of course, in this fiscal year, that will all be offset this year, so that I won't have, we won't have to deal with that as a transfer, but if, let's say for instance, something happened and we didn't get that money before the end of the fiscal year, I would likely propose a, an internal transfer to short-term, pay for that until the private investment come in, but that's talking in potential scenarios.
Question.
Yes.
We budgeted 141,500 for economic development, we only spent 34,319.
Oh, thank you, actually, that's where we had proposed the spending of the facade project, I apologize.
So that will be spent, actually, or?
Yes.
Okay, because I was thinking, you know, if we ever needed to use our resources anywhere, it would be in economic development.
Typically, what we have built in to the economic development line items are, you will see that being planning and zoning type of cost, you will see that including anything we're doing from a general fund project that doesn't fall under any other category, you know, most things are going to fall under a different category, but in this case, it wouldn't.
Some of our contributions to Chamber Main Street and SCTD come out of that?
No, they'd be coming out of general government, because they come out of the general miscellaneous fund.
So.
Remember, these fund categories are defined by the state.
Right.
At certain line items, whether it makes sense or not, goes into a certain fund.
So, the only reason I was asking is so that apparently we've really put in another 20-plus thousand dollars toward the economic development activities that wouldn't really be reflected in here.
Right.
Correct, correct, it's not nearly that clean cut, is what I'm saying.
So, this carries over and is usable, and we add more to that fund?
Uh, no, see what happens is, is that when we build a budget, I never know from year to year whether or not the whole facade project's going to get done in one fiscal year or another fiscal year, I don't know if the sewer project's going to get done in one fiscal year or multiple fiscal years, but since what the role is, is that the state wants me, I, I'm not allowed to spend money without being written up that is not budgeted for, so therefore, what happens is, is that I have to try to predict how much of the project's going to get done in a year, so what you're seeing reflected on that, for instance, that line you were just pointing out, Barb, the community and economic development, I expected the potential that a lot more of the facade project was going to get done last year before the end of June and paid for, well, it didn't happen, that's why you see the big gap difference there, I built it, once again, a large portion into this year's budget, assuming that a good portion of it will get paid for, but even in this year, unless something crazy happens, I don't anticipate we'll get 100% of the project in this year, so I'll reflect at least a part of the project in next year, so there's part of the project that will have now been reflected in three different fiscal years because I have to preliminary project that there's a potential we might do that. Usually, that's cleaned up during the amendment process, when we amend the budget at the end of the year, I can amend some things up, some things down, then you have the anomalies like debt service, which you're off $500, you know, those things happen.
I would move passage, resolution 214-22 entitled Resolution Approving 2014 Fiscal Year Finance Report.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution number 2014-22 entitled Resolution Approving 2014 Year Finance Report, are there any additional questions, comments? Call for a vote, please.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Seven miscellaneous, excuse me, six miscellaneous, B is introduction and first reading of ordinance number 2014-262 entitled An Ordinance Amending the Court of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by Amending Provisions Pertaining to Sewer Service Charges.
I've had several meetings with council members over the last two or three days discussing some of the elements of this proposal, going back a little bit in history, and this is going back probably four years ago, there was a recommendation at the time by one of the council members who's no longer with us, that we, that the debt service, that the way that Rural Water recommends that the utilities be set up, is that debt service be established, the payment for debt services be established through the base, the base rate for the, for the utility, and that the rates be established in conjunction to pay for the operating cost of a facility, of a utility, we have not used that philosophy, we discussed it some when we made rate changes in the, in, at the beginning of this year, but we didn't really move in that direction, we stayed more towards putting it into rates rather than into the base, and there's a couple of different factors impacting what occurred this year, but since we've put that into place, we've had a wet spring and summer and fall, and we've had a, which, and of course, we've seen reduced usage, which of course equals reduced revenue, now, I can't sit here and tell you how much of that is a result of the wet season we had, and I can't tell you how much of that is a result of the, of the, of the rate changes, because of course, one of the risks anytime you put the load on rates, is people can attempt to take action to reduce their load, so therefore they, they had, they can lower their rates, so you have both downward factors impacting the amount of revenue that comes in a particular situation. One of the things that I was proposing tonight, and you're going to hear other council members, you're going to hear some council members recommend some different things, one of the things that I was proposing was, is that we look at putting this in that original type of structure that was recommended to us by a previous council member in the first place, in your packet, you will see a, a rate study program that was ran based upon revenue desires, based upon our usage numbers, and our, and our cost parameters, when you put that into place, and you tell the system that you want to put the debt service cost into the hands of your base rate, it comes out and it recommends a base rate which is reflected on your ordinance form, then it also recommends a rate per, it also recommends a rate to you, which would be your per thousand amount, these are not set in stone, what's put on your ordinance, you can amend this, this proposed amendment to the ordinance to read any way you want before this evening ends, however, my recommendation to you is, is that where we find ourselves today, is the changes that we made nine months ago, 10 months ago now, that were meant to resolve the issue have not shown the revenue improvements that we expected, and as I just said, I can't deny the fact that there may be multiple contributors that are preventing those revenues from meeting the targets we wanted them to meet, so, I mean, obviously, our rates are not set in stone, you make rate adjustments, you can always reanalyze them over a time period, but the fact of the matter is, is we're not meeting those, after reviewing six, six to nine months of this, we're not meeting our revenue expectations, and, you know, I, I, one thing about this is, is the only way you solve this, there's only two ways that you can solve this problem, one is, is to reduce expenses, the other is, is to increase revenue, I mean, there's no magic pill to that, that's your two choices or combination thereof, and of course, we continue to serve to attempt to solve that by approaching this in both directions, and, you know, I think there's been good headway made, and one thing that the subcommittee that discussed this, I think that what they're seeing is, is good headway is being made in saving cost, I was looking at our projections, I just had my initial budget meetings with Dwayne this, at the end of last week, and the projections he has put into place for the next fiscal year compared to where we were when the plant was first opened, showed that there has been a real effort made towards reducing cost at the plant, for, you know, just to give you one example, water usage, before the update at the plant, the water usage, the bill at the, at the plant, was averaging in the range of about $1,000 to $1,200 a year, after the facility was updated, the initial charges for the first year were just short of $12,000, and so you're talking about a significant increase in the amount of water usage, I'm just using this as one example, through Dwayne, through Dwayne's efforts of working with the manufacturers of the equipment that use water out there, mainly the intake strains, drains, he was able to work out a method of where they could alter the way they were using the system there, and he is projecting about a $3,800 a year cost next year compared to their high mark of almost 12,000, so I give Dwayne full marks for taking every effort, and he continues, I mean, he was talking with us just last week, that he believes he's taking some efforts that will reduce cost in the telecom side of things, that to save a couple of thousand dollars here and there, I don't want to give the impression that there's not, and I think we sometimes mistake this to say, that the department is not taking every step they can to reduce cost where they can, and I've seen that reflected in his budget, from the high end of $290,000 to now his projected year next year, he's hoping to be in the neighborhood of 250,000, which is a $40,000 difference in what he expects, that's great news, and that helps us in the future, what that unfortunately doesn't do, is that since we're not meeting our revenue marks from where we wanted to be at the beginning of this year, the, we're now that much farther behind in getting solvency in the sanitary sewer department, and we already now have the past internal debts that we have taken on, that we have to address on top of the external debt service loan that we have in place, this is not a fun discussion to have, but we have to do something to deal with the revenue issue, so what you see before you within the ordinance was, is the recommendation that I had came out of that discussion, and after reviewing it with, with the program offered up by Rural Water to deal with rates, you might remember when we made the changes before, as I said, we really didn't do it across the board, we had, it was much more of a progressive type of, of adjustment, this is much, this is much flatter reapproach to the issue, does anyone have any questions for me?
I'll need to introduce this before we discuss it.
Sure.
I would introduce ordinance number 2014-262 An Ordinance Amending the Court of Ordinances to the City of Sac City, Iowa by Amending Provisions Pertaining to Sewer Service Charges.
What is the minimum charge for residential currently?
12,000, or $12.50.
So we're going to double it?
Yes, the, the base, the rate though, is currently $8.30, so we'd be running the usage rate to $7.
See, I think that was more than what we discussed at our meeting, that's what kind of took me back, so.
Well, this isn't a discussion any of us wants to have, obviously, I don't think we can have the sewer plant going broke, and I think, with that being said, I, I'm not terribly fond of the, of the numbers that are here, my first, I guess I have maybe three major concerns, first of all, looking at this model, if you're using 25 and 7 for residential, when you hit 9,000 gallon, you suddenly have a decrease in what you're paying for sewer rate with this over what you're currently paying, and there are 14 residential customers, and there are, I would assume, a majority of the commercial customers who would exceed.
About 20, there's about 20 commercial customers, we really don't have that many large water users.
Okay, I mean, I mean, in terms of, in terms of like apartment complexes and those kind of things, I mean.
Yeah.
Or group homes, so we would have a group of people under this who would actually see an effective decrease in rate by going to this, while we have a large majority of the people who are experiencing, you know, beyond a 45% increase in their sewer rate, now, that, that would be my first concern, secondly, I think from an economic development point of view, as I did kind of a quick perusal of as many city websites as I could find that actually had sewer rates, about the highest one I found for a base was Storm Lake, and it was 1799, and that included the first 1,500 gallons with it, so if we're trying to attract people, I would really like to see us do something that gets our base, so it doesn't have a 2 at the beginning of it, I mean, I don't care if it's 1999, I would like to see something that doesn't have a 2 at the beginning of it.
Well, based on Bruce's, made the same comments to me, him and I ran the numbers in the same model, to come up with the same revenue numbers, but yet, adjust the base so the base would be at 1999, and what we came out with was a base of 1999 and a, and a rate of $8.40, that would bring in the same amount of revenue as the proposed model, but of course, putting more, you know, you're putting more of it in usage rather than in base.
What's the base now, did you say?
The residential base is $12.50.
And it's, I mean, it's putting significantly more on the base, which is giving us a more guaranteed income, but I, I'm really scared from the economic development. guaranteed income, but I, I'm really scared from the economic development point of view. I mean, right now, we have one of the highest sewer rates in the state, I'm safe to say, and we're increasing it, but I think if people are looking at it and they see that, you know, I think maybe we need to use kind of the same marketing strategies that so many retailers use, when you see that 2 at the beginning, you say, oh my God, what is that? You see a 1 at the beginning, you say, well, it's high, but it doesn't seem quite as bad.
Let's say if we are attracting, let's say, a business or industry that is water intensive, their major expense, you know, is going to be, you know, not in the base, but in the overall cost. So if, if they're looking at a rate, they would prefer probably to have a, you know, a large business coming in that is a heavy user, would rather have, look at that cost per thousand gallons, as opposed to just paying $25 for the, you know, base rate. You know, so as far as attracting, you know, a big user in economic development, I think it would be in favor of us to keep the, you know, per usage rate down and the base rate up. Another thing, too, with fixed overheads, you know, when you run a business, and I consider the sewer plant a business, you have fixed overhead costs, that first gallon going through, you have to have everything in order for that very first gallon going through, so somebody that's real low usage, you know, they pay very little, you know, on the base rate, but yet their first gallon's going to be a lot less, and they really don't share in that, but the full facility has to be there in order to perform the...
Well, and quite honestly, to that point, with the amount of intrusion you have into the old system, in a wet season like we had, while your revenue was down, you're actually treating more, more water at the plant because of the intrusion that comes into the sys, I'm sorry, into the system.
I'd throw out another comment, and that would be this. Well, anybody that comes in here and looks at our city, they're always asking, what can you offer me? If a, if a large company came in, would it be negotiable to say, look, we'll negotiate this rate with you, because I think we need to look for things that we can negotiate if we're going to attract somebody, because they ask, and we have to come up with a plan.
The council always has the authority to adjust their rates, and one thing we've, I, I know we talked about just generically amongst ourselves before, is if we had the potential for a large man, let's say a manufacturer comes in, it's going to bring 50 jobs, and they're going to use a ton of water. Our plant, one, can support a large water user. The, the discussion at that time was, is if the council really wanted to, and what they could do is establish, very quickly in fact, I mean, it would take less than a month to do so, a bulk user rate, that they could, of course, establish for people who are using over a certain amount of water.
Well, I think that's important, because I believe that, that people that are looking to land a business somewhere today, look at every single bottom line cost, and they, and there are plenty of cities that will give them plenty of incentives to come there. And if we're on the bottom of that totem pole, they're going to drive right by.
Yeah, and, and I don't mean that that's what we would do, or I'm throwing these numbers out of the air, so I don't want anybody to hold me to these numbers. But say you have a customer comes in and says, I want 200,000 gallons a day. If you had a customer came in and said they wanted $200,000, 1,000 gallons a day, the first question you have to ask from an economic development standpoint is, can our water plant sustain that? And in our case, the answer to that, and we're very rare in this scenario, is, yeah, we're set today to supply 200,000 gallons a day to, to a customer who wants to come in. The next question is, it will be, is, is okay, well, if they're using that much water, city council, do you want to establish a special rate for bulk users that are using 200,000 gallons a day? You know, that is, that is an option that the, the council could establish, and as I stated, could establish relatively quickly.
Well, Barb, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're saying we should have something in hand to offer them, rather than waiting for a council meeting to make the decision? Am I right?
Well, I, I don't, we don't have any kind of a real package to show anybody, we've been talking about it a lot, we've been talking about it at SDC, we've been talking about it at other meetings, and I just feel like we have to be prepared, and that's one of the areas that we really need to work on. We need to be aggressive in working on figuring out what we as a community have to offer for anybody that would really look at us.
You know, so, we have to paint the picture of what we have in hand to offer them, and not just a promise that we will do something. They make their decisions on hard numbers.
Right, we can't just say, whoa, we might be able to do this.
But, you know, so if we, you know, and they're usually, you know, making quick decisions when they're looking around, because they're looking at other sites. So what we present to them, if, you know, we don't know what the scenario is going to be, what the usage, you know, what, where we would make that cutoff at.
I think we need to do a little research in what, like, communities would do if they had large water users. What would, what would an average rate be if they walked into a community and were looking at, we don't really have that information, I don't think we can make it even a recommendation at this point without a little more.
Not on that side, no. I don't think on that side we'd be ready to, and that would be a change both to sewer and water we would want to have.
And wouldn't that be part of this, or would it not be part of this?
I would argue not, that's dealing with an economic development area, and quite honestly, there's no reason that you can't amend this as we're moving into a second or third reading to incorporate that. But I, I think we need to be careful to say that we're separating two issues here. We're trying to deal with an immediate revenue issue with the sewer plant, and that's not something that's going away by not addressing it today. The economic development thing is something we can do partially in conjunction with this by making an update to the sewer over the next couple of readings to incorporate for a large user, and in the case of water, something we can come back and do separately, because of course, that would, in itself, would be a separate ordinance entirely.
It may not even have anything to do with this, I just think that we need to have a packet that it's in writing somewhere.
I don't think that's a bad idea, and I'd be happy to work with Jim and come up with some numbers for you on both sides, Jim and Dwayne, on both sides, for what a high-volume user, you know, what we'll have to identify is, from our perspective is, is defining what a high-volume user is. You have a question?
Yes.
I know for a number of years, our sewer rate has been tied to our water usage. Is there any way to split some of that off, or is that the correct way to do it? Is there any way that you could have a, or is that what we're showing?
Well, Gary, or Steve, actually, the way this is set up is, when we build, when you're billed for water, you pay a base rate, which has nothing to do with your usage, and then you pay a per thousand rate, which is based on your usage. In sewer, you have the same, you have the same thing. You have a base rate which isn't tied to your usage, but then, we have to have some way of deciding how to charge you for your usage. Well, there's no way to really regulate what's leaving your house.
Yeah, we don't meter it.
So what cities do is, is they base their metering fee for sewer on the metering fee for water. The one exception to that is garden meters. If you're establishing a garder, garden meter...
I had one before.
Okay, so you know the basis of a garden.
But at the same token, what Barb's talking is, okay, listen, Sac City, I consider, has probably one of the best waters in the Midwest, what if we had a bottler come into town and he uses 500,000 gallons of water a day, but he doesn't use much sewer?
That would definitely be something that the, that's definitely something that the council could negotiate in that type of purpose. You know, they're not limited in their ability to negotiate. Most of these negotiations, if you really think about it, by the time they would want to be up and running, it, it would take us four weeks to put it into place. Most of them aren't going to have a system like that up and running in a four-week period. So it, it would be very doable to be able to support that. However, if we wanted to put something in place, you know, the one magic line on all this that's going to be hard for us to determine is, one of the things I'm going to be sitting down with Jim doing is going, okay, Jim, what do we define as a high-volume user? What does their per month usage need to be to qualify for a high-volume user? And that's a discussion we'll have to have internally and probably talk to some, and probably reach out to some other organizations to, to get a definition there. Once we define that, we'll need to fill, figure out what our generic fixed costs are for that service, and then make sure whatever we're charging them builds in our fixed costs, but probably not go beyond that, so that it is an incentive to, to any type of large user like that.
It just scares me when you hear that, that my sewer barrel can go up 48% and the people who use it a little bit more water than I am is basically getting a rebate, you know, and we're talking, we're short of money.
Sure.
You know, I, I guess that's like, where's the level?
And it's part of a byproduct of the fact that the last time we looked at doing this, we weighed heavily on the rates and did very little to the basis. And so what we're acknowledging at this point is, is to really solve this problem, you need to establish that you're receiving a certain amount of revenue. And the only way you can guarantee revenue in, in one of these utilities is putting it in the base rate, or the base.
What's it going to do if, let's just say here, let's raise the base rate $5 a month?
In order to come up with the money that we would need to do, that would be, we'd have to increase the per thousand somewhat, probably, eyes off the top of my head, we'd probably have to run it from 830, I would say, maybe a buck up, and that would not be a guarantee on that.
Right, there always the time, the more you put into rates, the more risk you build into the system, because most...
They'll come back, conservation, yeah.
Absolutely. And, and you got to remember, and this is one thing that it's also hard for us to determine, is, because once again, we had a wet year, so it's hard to say this, but one thing we've seen in the last six to nine months, is since we've done what we did in sewer, we've also seen less revenue in water. Well, it's hard to say, is that a result of the wet summer, or is that a result to people's attempts at conservation? So, and it's really hard to make a determination on that, because if you look at the two previous years that were very dry years, they were abnormally dry. So you really don't have a good baseline to, to determine what is an average year, I guess is what I'm saying.
Are we getting anywhere closer of coming to that magic zero where there's no interaction between systems? No influx from the old system?
In sewer?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely not. We have, I would still say that the average pipe in Sac City underground for sanitary sewer purposes is in the neighborhood of 70 years old, and, and we still have just as much clay in the ground as we have anything else. I mean, that's a sad reality, I mean, the one thing you're hearing at the academic level in these, in my field, is that the greatest growing danger to our country is the state of our underground infrastructure, that it's in horrible shape. Most of it was put into place back in the 30s and 40s, and it's lived well beyond its life expectancy already, and it's, and it's going to cost, it costs quite a bit more than it did during the Roosevelt Alphabet Soup days to replace those lines.
Yes, we've talked about, you know, two ways to deal with this, I think there's maybe a third way, too, that maybe is more, a little bit intangible. We talked about reducing costs, we talked about increasing income through rates. We have 1,050 sewer users. If we were to, if we were to manage to get 1,100 instead of 1,050, that's another way of increasing the rate. I guess, when, when we look at, like, we use rates, which are pretty close to where we live, I mean, their, their base rate is 1,120, which includes the first 1,000 gallons and 48 per thousand, so basically, their base rate is under $7. And if we're looking to relocate someplace, Wall Lake, Wall Lake is, I think, close, similar to that, so if we're looking to relocate someplace, even if we say, I want to move to Sac County. I mean, there's, I think there's the industry or the economic development side, but I mean, there's also the housing side. And I still go back to, I would, I would personally be much more comfortable with something that started with a 1 than something that started with a 2 for a base rate.
I would agree with you, but I don't vote on it, but I would agree with you, because there's, scare people off.
Well, let's be all honest, and you hate to say this, but it's a reality of the situation, and I can go either way, but let's be all honest with ourselves. If they're basing where they're moving, whether it's their business or their, or their home, on what their sewer rates are going to be, we are not in a position to be competitive in that market. What we hope is, is that our other areas are strong enough to justify such a thing, and, because that's not going, I mean, whether you take today's rates or tomorrow's rates, that's not going to change, it's still going to be the case. And, but, but I honestly could see, I, I will continue to monitor this. So whatever change we approve, inevitably, our hopeful goal should be to be talking six months to eight, 18 months from now window-wise, to be talking about what we can reduce things down to, because let's be all honest, part of our issue now is not our debt service, it's not our operating cost, it's now the internal debts that we've created to ourselves and other departments that need to be, started to be paid back, that we're not catching up on. And that's, you might remember, we found ourselves back in 2008 with a similar situation with the water department, where we were, had a situation where the, all the meters had been replaced, they'd anticipated quite an injection of lost water revenue as a result of the meters not making that water up. They spent all this money on a bond issue to go out and buy new meters, and their plan was, is to partially pay it back with the new water that was not being calculated by the old inaccurate water meters, and it didn't come to reality. So here, this revenue that was expected to pay for the debt service never happened, and so what ended up happening, we ended up increasing our water rates at that time quite significantly to resolve that problem. And, and as a result, one of the, not only did we need to deal with the debt service issue, we also had to deal with the internal debt issue. Now, you can tackle the internal debt issue within an 18-month period, but we have to start jumping on that now. It's becoming a major liability to us. The sewer plant already owes in the neighborhood of about $200,000 of internal loans to other departments. That is going to continue to grow. Our hope was, is that the action we took at the beginning of the year had stopped that from continuing to be the situation. Now we're nine months down the road, and we're not doing anything to chip away at that hill, and that's the alarming state that we find ourselves in, is we've got to start chipping away at that internal debt hill, because it's starting to impact, you know, when you're taking $200,000 away from other funds, that's $200,000 worth of reserves to do other types of projects that we're not able to do now in those other departments, because that money is now tied up in paying the costs associated with the sanitary sewer department.
So we get that paid up, then we, then the cost goes down?
That's, my hope is, is that, that as we do this, we'll start chipping away at that as soon as possible, and in a very short time period, we can be talking about what we want to do as far as adjustments on the, to the positive adjustments in the, in the rate analysis.
You know, and one thing we have to remember is, we built the new sewer plant, we're up to standards for hopefully another 25 years going forward.
Well, we have a new permit. Our permit is good for the life of the plant. Any new changes that will be coming, we are, unless the EPA gets real nasty with us, we are protected from any new testing requirements that should come in in the next couple of decades.
And what I was going to be saying, you know, you'd mentioned the fact that there are a lot, that basic infrastructure in this country is one of the things that's really hurting. There are going to be other communities, from what I, just kind of from my reading, like in our journal, you know, that there will be other plants, you know, other cities are going to have to be constructing other plants, their, their cost, all of a sudden, they're going to be facing the same thing that we are. You know, if we didn't have a new plant, and we weren't in the... You know, if we didn't have a new plant, and we weren't in the, you know, business of making, you know, building a new plant, we wouldn't be having this discussion. It's because of the new plant, and we have to realize that there are other communities that are gonna have to be facing the same issue when they are starting to being forced to be, you know, meet the criteria, that their plants may already may not-
Well, and to that point, I was notified that this year, that the DNR is no longer permitting two-cell lagoons. They will not permit them anymore. They will still permit three-cell lagoons, but they are no, the message is now out, don't be applying for any more permits for two-cell lagoons. Lagoon systems are slowly going away. And I'm really concerned what that means for a lot of our smaller communities in this state, because as they fill off lagoon permits, and this is the cheap method of managing your waste, many of our smaller communities are going to struggle with transitioning into the next phase of dealing with sanitary sewer. I mean, we're getting off topic here, but that's, that's a major issue coming.
I wanna ask you what you expect of us tonight on item number B.
I would like some form of a first reading to be approved, regardless of what those numbers, those are.
Let's come to that discussion.
Okay, the biggest concern I have is, we have a lot of elderly people and a lot of low-income people, and an increase such that if there are low-water users or any increase in the base is really gonna be effective, because everything else here, the Medicare rates have went up, the insurance rates have went up, you know, that's a real concern to me, that it's gonna affect a lot of people that really can't afford it.
And what's the minimum amount that you would say would be necessary in the base rate in order to, you know, one of the main arguments here is the predictability.
I could support Bruce's idea of the nineteen ninety-nine. I mean, if that's where they'd wanna go, I'd feel a miss. I'm a little uncomfortable with it, because, once again, we're still not following that, the concept of debt service being covered by it. But I do think that if, as long as we're tracking the revenue numbers, I think that would still solve the issue.
How long do you think it would take to find out if the nineteen ninety-nine-
Very minimum, past your third reading, it'd take me three months to start to see any numbers back.
So, within three months, you could tell?
I could have an idea. The problem is, is that every-
Season is different.
Season is different.
Right.
And so it's hard, I can take a sampling and give you what my belief is based on that sampling, but it will be at a minimum three months before I can compare it to dry years and wet years, to predict what our revenue is at and where it should be at.
And the other thing, in the next, in the next month, we've witnessed multiple months where the sanitary sewer has been processing sometimes nearly double of what they're actually getting billed for. And, but according to the chart that Jim created, now we're entering the season where the sanitary sewer is actually maybe only processing half of what they're getting billed for. So we're entering a time where there shouldn't be an opportunity to, you know, make up-
Catch up a bit.
To catch up a little bit.
Yeah.
And I'll kind of dovetailing this what Tom said, I mean, if we do that, you know, the twenty-five dollars, I mean, basically, looking at a low user, middle user, high user kind of thing, there'd be like a fifty-two percent increase that we'd be putting on the sewer toward, toward the people that may be on fixed incomes, and twenty-four-point-four percent on the higher users. And when you get to the really higher user, you know, above nine thousand, you're talking about a decrease.
That's not right.
I guess with that in mind, I would move to amend ordinance number two thousand fourteen dash two sixty-two, to have a base charge of nineteen ninety-nine per month for residential users.
You can separate the commercial if you like.
And the eight, eight forty per month thousand for the residential.
Do you, are you recommending changes lower down to the commercial side as well? You'll see the way it's built.
Yeah. And, and then if we keep it at twenty-five and seven fifty for the commercials?
What is it now? What is commercial now?
It is currently, it, oh, that's the old one. It is currently-
It's sixteen fifty and eight thirty.
No, yeah, sixteen fifty and eight thirty.
And you wanna go to twenty-four?
Drop the other one to seven?
Or do you want them to both read the same?
Let's just have, let's just have them read the same.
I think so, too.
Nineteen ninety-nine and eight forty?
Mm-huh.
Okay.
So I guess I would make, I would move to amend the ordinance to read nineteen ninety-nine and eight forty for both residential and commercial property.
Okay.
You have a motion to amend.
I know. We have a motion to amend the first reading of ordinance number two thousand fourteen dash two sixty-two, and ordinance amending the code of ordinance to the city of Sac City. I will by amending provisions pertaining sewer service charges to nineteen ninety-nine and eight forty for both commercial and residential. You have any comments in addition? We need a second, don't we?
And this will just be a vote on the amendment to the ordinance, then we will need to vote on the ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance itself.
Is anybody ready to make a second on that amendment?
You just wanna get out of here.
Can I ask one more question, Adam? On the thing you produced showing estimated costs on the estimates, how much fluctuation is there in there for trial and error? I mean, there's gotta be, it's gotta be-
There is some projected-
Any percentages that you can come off the top of your head?
About fifteen percent, because I expect some adjustment in usage that we need to project out of this as well.
And, second thing is, how much of the, that's off the subject, but how much of the cost is to run the overflow of the water that's coming into the sewer system that's not going through the water system?
I can't give you an exact number there, but-
It's a lot of gallons of-
Oh, yes. And of course, you have to treat all that, you have the electricity, the heat.
Exactly. So that's product that we're treating that we get absolutely no income, so that needs to be rectified somewhere along the line also.
Yes.
Which that's another-
Yeah, okay, that's off the subject, but thank you.
Oh, absolutely, Tom.
So do we have a second to that amendment? So, that dies for lack of a second?
This is gonna be fun to write, lack of a second.
Is there a different motion that someone would like to make?
Personally, I think, beans were throwing all these numbers around, I would really recommend we table it until we can come up with some actual numbers that would satisfy everyone. I mean, I think we're going up, we're going down, we're moving this, and we're moving that, we're raising the rate, we're lowering the, and I'm not sure it's gonna, if it will cover everything that we're being charged for, that we're going into debt for, or is it not gonna be enough, or is it gonna be overage? If it's an overage, I'd like to keep that as minimal as possible, so.
Nineteen ninety-nine and eight forty figures out, using, it figures out to the same amount of income as the twenty-five and seven.
Yeah. And understand, anything overage that we would collect during the period that we have that in place, what I would argue would all be contributed to paying off more of the internal debt quicker, so that we can get back to some kind of stable normalcy.
Well, I guess I just know from practical experiences, once it goes up, it very rarely goes down, if it does, it's very slowly, so. That's, I don't know.
Well, and I think we've shown effort not to be overly absorbent, I mean, look at our property tax rates. They've gone from, I mean, the time we've been, some of us have been here, it's gone from twenty-three dollars down to fifteen ninety, fifteen and eighty. I mean, I think there's effort made on our part, but I honestly am concerned. This is definitely not one of our brighter moments.
No.
As I said earlier, though, we actually have three readings to this ordinance, and no matter what figures we put into them now-
It can be amended.
They can be amended as we go along in the three readings, is that not correct?
Correct. And if you don't wanna make a motion yourself, I mean-
Is there anybody that wants to reconsider Bruce's motion after discussing? We're sort of at a standstill here, and we have to move forward somehow. So if you don't like that, then someone needs to make a suggestion, what you would like to see. I'm sure someone has an opinion.
Is there any way you can go through these figures again and try to come up with a more realistic, even closer to the budget thing, to maybe we can balance this out?
I mean, we can do so, Tom, but every number, we tighten it up, is one more opportunity that we're not covering it. And we come back and have to deal with the same situation again.
There's no other way in the budget to-
I mean, you can put whatever numbers you want in, if you wanna do something less than this. If you're not comfortable with these numbers and you wanna propose less than these numbers, you know, you could do that tonight as well, we can continue to work on that, and I can give you, I'd be happy to give you some, some more realistic numbers. I can tell you what's built into the rural water system, what's built into the rural water system is about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for debt service. Well, of that, two hundred and eighty-two thousand goes into actually paying our loan amount, let me raise that, two hundred and eighty-three thousand is built into actually paying for the debt service we have to pay on the plant of that three hundred and fifteen. Within the plant itself, we have been operating typically in the range of about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. What I have built into that number is three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which is actually twenty-five thousand dollars more there, and then you've got an additional, roughly forty thousand, I'm just using generic numbers here. What I'm giving, but remember, we have an internal debt sitting here of a hundred and twenty and hundred and four, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars of internal debt that we've already established, and we're already six months behind this year, that we aren't going to collect. So this number could climb as high as three hundred and fifty thousand dollars by the end of this fiscal year, if we're not addressing this. I, we can pay it back slower. I mean, if you wanna adjust them a different way, we can pay them back slower. But what we're doing is, is my timetable of maybe us reviewing this in six to eighteen months will be extended by deciding we're going to reduce those, not starting off in front of the problem, but trying to load up to the problem.
And those departments that, you know, the, you know, sewer plant owes, it just slows down their ability, you know, addressing them as different business entities, it slows down their ability to do other things as well with their infrastructure, doesn't it not?
Right. We right now have loans in place from the special assessment fund, we have loans in place from the storm sewer utility fund, and we have loans in place from the debt service fund. So there, those, we're trying to keep it out of reserves that are-
Good point.
Need to be more flexible for usage. But the fact that we've started moving into using other utilities to now pay that debt means we're now impacting our ability to do other things in those locations. And-
Just for clarification, did you say these numbers here do make it work?
This would not only cover it, I believe would be above it instead of on it. And I think, one of the things we've tried so hard to do is, is we've tried not to be overly excessive in our approach. And I think that's part of where our failure has been, is that we try to be, we try to be so conservative in the increase that we haven't allowed ourselves to get in front of it. Now we're coming into a place where we need to get in front of it. And I'm the first one that will amend that I think these numbers are slightly on the higher side of what we need. But my approach also is, is as we see the new revenues coming in, I can then talk to you guys about making adjustments to it as a result of that. These numbers are being built with the idea that they won't stay permanently.
And it certainly isn't a discussion that any of us wants to have on a Tuesday night before Thanksgiving, as we're preparing to, you know, I guess, get with families and celebrate. But I think it's also a discussion that we have to have, because, you know, we, you can't just let the credit card debt sit there forever and ever.
And that's kind of my point tonight. I'm not saying that these are the numbers you have to prove tonight, but if we walk away from tonight not having taken the first step, we've done ourselves and our community a disservice by not taking the first step.
You know, as we're, as people are being encouraged not to build up credit card debt as they're getting ready for the holiday season, we're kind of continuing to add to our credit card debt if we don't begin to take some steps to move forward. I think the question remains, you know, again, what is the ideal number? What can we do? I don't, I mean, I kind of, well, I know where my comfort level is, you know, I won't say it's my comfort level, I mean, I, I mean, I know where I'm kind of willing to go. I, I am very uncomfortable, I would have a hard time supporting a twenty-five dollar base rate, I'll be brutally honest on that. Just, but I think we need to find some program that will probably generate about the same amount of money.
With the same amount of money within the sewer business?
Within the sewer business, yeah. Because the auditors made it quite clear that the sewer has to pay for the sewer debt. It's that we can't, we can't pay for the sewer debt by having John write more traffic tickets, we can't get a traffic camera to pay for the sewer debt. We can't sell lollipops or Christmas wreaths to pay for the sewer debt, we can't do that. It has to be, it has to be a self-supporting utility.
And, and long-term, it has to be a self-supporting.
Yeah. And right, and right now, we're kind of going door-to-door from utility to utility, department to department, saying, this is trick-or-treat for sanitary sewer. Can you, or is, you know, the kids at the church, we're going door-to-door looking for, you know, non-perishable foods for the food pantry. You can hardly walk into the church now because of all the bags of food, which is awesome. But we don't have that option for the sewer plant. I mean, the sewer plant ultimately has to pay for the sewer plant. And I would love not to have to vote for any increase. I think, I would love to be able to say, look, folks, here's a great holiday surprise, your bill is going to be decreasing for the, you know, for the next five years, we're going to guarantee that. I don't think that's realistic. Nevertheless, I would have a hard time supporting something where everybody wasn't experiencing at least some increased support of the sewer system.
You know, I'm gonna go back to my original argument or discussion. It costs, you know, so many dollars just to run that first gallon through. That first gallon needs a complete sewer plant. You know, and so if that real low user pays very, not the fair share on the, on the base rate, they're not gonna make up for it in the usage, you know, and what we're really talking about is, how are we gonna play around with, you know, those two figures? You know, we've got the base rate and the usage rate, you know, we can, one's gonna have to go up and-
They both have to go up.
They both probably have to go up, but it's just a matter of how much.
Well, what this is right now is, one is going up and one is going down. Our courage is twelve fifty and eight thirty.
Right.
So we're going to twenty-five and seven. Seven for the, seven for, seven for residential, seven fifty for commercial.
The other option we've discussed- The other option we've discussed, of course, is, is that if we want to keep the base under twenty dollars, you know, that mental game.
Right.
Then you would set the base at nineteen ninety-nine, and since Bruce had already approached me with this, I was able to say, figure out what the rate amount would be to bring in the same level of revenue, and that would be eight dollars and forty cents. So that's... So you'd end up with a nineteen ninety-nine and an eight forty, and it would bring in the same financial amount as twenty-five and seven would.
Myself, I think it's more user-friendly. You're... What do you think?
I guess the only question I was gonna throw out here fifteen minutes ago was, do we have to go by this rural water standard that you talked about thirty-five minutes ago?
No, we simply use their...
Where would that put us at, Adam? Do you have those figures? If we didn't go by this new system that you're talking about, where would we be? Would we be at the same?
No. No. If you look at... If we don't change anything, if we keep our system where it is now, we will have to borrow money at the end of this year.
But I mean, I don't understand what you're talking... I know Jim was very, very successful in the rural water.
Oh, I get what you're saying. No, no. Simply, Jim was very involved in doing rate surveys.
Right, right. And I guess that's how I kind of took it, is that we're trying to go from this type of bookkeeping system to this one over here.
Right.
Were we going anywhere over here originally?
To that point, understand, of course, Jim used to be on the council.
Right, right, right.
Jim was an advocate when the plant was being built.
Sure.
That the changes that were being made at that time should have been put in the base from the get-go.
Sure.
And he was a strong advocate for that. However, that was not how the rate was initially changed.
I understand all that. I didn't know what you were adding by going to the rural water type of calculation.
All we did is we punched in how many...
It's just a number calculation.
Okay.
Basically, what we have here is this is debt service.
Yep.
Number of...
Yep.
Number of per gallon. Usage, number of users. And this was predicated on the fact that this was going to... That these were going to... That the number of users, the base fee was going to be...
Sure.
I mean, that's... I mean, it's not so much a...
Well, no. It's basically...
What?
Make a new amendment at this point. That's what I'm saying.
I guess that's my biggest opinion in looking at all of this is, is if we can pay off debt, and somebody will say, or, you know, it's just like anything, if we can make a promise that our rates will go down sometime, that'd be great.
Yeah, I agree. But it's gotta be reasonable.
Because I really think we... You know, and I guess this is something that I hope I could come back to the console here once some of this gets down the road and the chamber board's up and going and things like this, that we can talk about this economic development issue.
Absolutely. I think that's another discussion.
Because I think that could be an answer to a lot of things that we're having in town.
Okay, are you ready to act on to anything?
I would like to make an amendment on this ordinance number twenty-fourteen dash two sixty-two to move those amounts to nineteen dollars and eight dollars and forty cents.
For both?
For both.
Okay.
Does that figure... Did you have enough built into that to feel comfortable with nineteen?
It will, without a doubt, get us going in the right direction, and what I can do between now and the second reading is I can do a full analysis of that for you. It will definitely put us on the right path, and...
So that would be... So doing that would then, if we have a thousand fifty users, that would be twelve thousand six hundred dollars less a year doing nineteen rather than nineteen ninety-nine.
All you're doing is, is cutting into my...
So that would give us, um, the nineteen ninety-nine... Well, okay, I guess it would... A pen... It would be not quite twelve thousand six hundred. It would be slightly over twelve thousand dollars less that we would generate from income in a year using nineteen and eight forty than what the nineteen ninety-nine and eight forty did. And the nineteen ninety-nine and eight forty was designed to balance the...
Right. This would simply just reduce the revenue, but it would still... I would still... I would feel we probably still above the threshold. We're above the threshold.
Okay.
Under the circumstances that these figures can be adjusted as the readings go along, I would second an amendment.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded.
An amendment.
The... I was getting there. A motion has been made and seconded to amend it to, say, nineteen dollars and eight forty for ordinance number two thousand fourteen dash two sixty-two. The ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the city of Sac City. I will by amending provisions pertaining to sewer service charges.
Also, that would be for commercial and residential.
For commercial and residential.
Right.
Are there any further comments, or is there any further discussion? If not, would you call for a vote, Adam?
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Brenney.
No.
Councilmember McGinty.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
I commend you for having a good discussion on the subject and really thinking about it, so, uh, thank you. We'll move on to...
You now need to make a motion on the first reading.
Okay.
I would move passage of the first reading of ordinance number two thousand fourteen two sixty-two and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Sac City. I will by amending provisions pertaining to the sewer service charges as amended to include the base fee of nineteen dollars for both residential and commercial customers and eight forty for per thousand for usage above that.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the first reading of ordinance number two thousand fourteen dash two sixty-two and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Sac City. I will by amending provisions pertaining to sewer service charges with the amendment of the base cost being nineteen dollars and the usage charge being eight dollars and forty cents for both commercial and residential properties. Are there any further questions or discussion? If not, call for a vote, please.
Councilperson McGinty.
Yes.
Councilperson Brenney.
No.
Councilperson Hanson.
Yes.
Councilperson Perry.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Seven miscellaneous C's discussion on future board appointments. And you have that list in front of you, but honestly, there are only revolving loan fund. We have one person, Laura Zimmerman. Would it be something that you'd wish to ask if she would like to remain, or would you like to...
Typically, I give you this list just to let you know whose names and if there's any comments. At this point, what I'll be doing over the next month is notifying them that their terms are up and ask them if they seek to be reappointed. That's how we handle it.
The next one, skip all the rest. There aren't any in there. Then you go down to planning and zoning. Bobby Wells is asked to not be on it, and Vicky Straub has moved away. So we have two people for P and Z.
And Strain has agreed to continue, I believe.
Okay.
Although his term is up.
Okay.
Yeah, he has already communicated he'd be willing to serve.
Okay. Um, you know what? I didn't take that into consideration.
There is one more, though. You got Brandy Ripley down for historic preservation.
Hadn't got there yet.
Yeah, we haven't gotten there yet, yeah. And you know, um, board of adjustment, I wasn't looking at this very closely. Jim Mason is off January second, two thousand fifteen, and that's right around the corner, and I would think that he might want to be off. I'm not sure, but you'll need to check, okay? Then looking at that, the other ones are June in two thousand fifteen, so we don't need to do anything about that at this point in time. Okay, then we go up to...
Was Steve reappointed to Kids World? It looks like...
We'll have to review both Kids World communities.
And the... Okay, the library board, never mind, that's June.
Community center board, he says we don't have too much to do with that. They pretty much get their own people, right?
Yeah, they'll provide us the information on that. We'll check with them.
And the same way with Kids World?
Yeah.
Okay, um, then we go down, like he said, to historic preservation. Check with Marilyn Wilhelm. Um, and Linda Kavanaugh is gone, so we'll need to replace her.
So Steve Gary has been appointed...
Oh, yeah.
To replace Linda Kavanaugh.
Okay. Somebody else was talking... They were saying what's gonna be on it.
No, I...
Well, Steve's seat is done at the end of the year, so we'll be talking to Steve about whether or not he is interested in being reappointed.
I might suggest that because of the gender equity issues, um, I think it's... Brandy Ripley was on this as a part of her Chamber Main Street appointment, which is maybe not quite kosher since she didn't live in city limits. But I think that there's a definite historic preservation part of Chamber Main Street where they like to have somebody, their director or somebody a part of that. If we were able to fill the position that Marilyn currently holds with a male, then we would be able to have a new chamber director involved, whether or not it is a male or female.
Can you think of anybody that might... You might think would be interested in that?
I have one person that I'm gonna ask.
Okay. Okay. Then Leo, let us know.
Also, on appointments, we talked... Maybe this is more council forum. I'm not quite sure on that. Uh, last meeting, we did approve the one dollar a person for the community pride.
Right.
And talking to Chloe, apparently all of the communities in the county have bought into that.
Yes.
And part of that motion was that we would have somebody from this body who is representing us on the county board of that.
I didn't read it necessarily that it had to be from this body, but they want...
Yeah, that was the motion.
That was our motion.
Oh, okay. Oh, I forgot that. I was reading her message today, and it didn't say that, but we did say that. And they want to know, because they want to get going.
I mean, I would be happy to do that if nobody else wants to do it. I mean, I think that'd be just fine.
Does anybody have any objection to that?
I'd also want to jump on that.
Okay, Bruce.
I mean, I'm just saying, I know that they want to start meeting in December, and I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, do I really need another board? No. But I guess I would like to see us have some, at least, direct information coming back on what's happening there.
I have some real strong feelings on what I'd like them to help us with and steer us in the direction. I mean...
Yeah. And if people have feelings about that, let me know. I mean, I'm happy to, you know... And my understanding is that we will also have a local steering committee for that.
Right. I think so, too. Okay, that's fine. Unless anybody has objection, let them know that you're gonna do it, okay?
Well, okay. I'll do that. That's fine.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, committee... Do we need any more discussion on that? Okay. Committee and department head reports. Are there any? We have written ones from all of them, so, um...
I'll be hitting up the finance committee to start meeting in December to go over the preliminary work. I've started receiving preliminary information back from the department heads. About half of them have turned in their preliminary numbers to me. So I'll be planning something for mid-December probably, before we get too close into the... Between hunting season and the Christmas season, I'll be talking with you about setting up a meeting.
Okay, is there anything in item number seven for the council forum?
The Northwest Iowa League is planning to have a December meeting on December fourth in Cherokee, at the Denny's in Cherokee, if any of you are interested in going. This was not on their original schedule. This just got put together at the big Friday, Monday, so if any of you are planning on attending, please let me know.
December fourth, you said?
December fourth, yes. Which is the same night as our parade.
That's the parade.
And I did meet with the, uh, with the P and Z committee beginning of last week, and we spent about two, two and a half hours working on the revolving loan proposal. I believe we've hammered out the, uh, a generic plan with the terms of that plan, and I told them that my projection was is that by sometime in December, that should be ready to present to them and to the council for preliminary review and see if they're... If it meets their approvals.
Are they meeting in December?
Maybe, maybe not. I don't think right now they're planning to. However, this probably won't get completely resolved till they meet again. But, um, we did work out details, so something can be drafted from that. And the Sac County League meeting is December tenth in Lakeview this year.
Are they doing that auction thing again?
But John from... The mayor from Lakeview has a... I just talked to him yesterday, or no, a week ago. And he has a box, you know, a nice woodworking box of some sort, already made, so I'm assuming that that's going forward.
Okay.
Or at least he's under the impression that it is.
Is there anything else?
The Community Foundation will be hosting Chamber Coffee here a week from Thursday, and we're going to be doing a mailing to people that has the brochure about the foundation and...
Isn't that that same day, December fourth?
Yeah, it is.
Do you think Santa will be there?
Santa will be here with his bag open, looking for checks for the Community Foundation. I think, you know, this is a gift to Santa instead of a take from Santa. But I think if the Community Foundation does a lot of good things for the community. I know that Bill and I both sit on that foundation board. We've done a lot of good things for the community, and if you can show up, then that would be just a nice...
Would they buy me a trailer?
I have to work that day.
You can come across like I'll be there.
If there's no... Nothing?
I have one other comment. You know, in our discussion with sewer, we really forgot to say thank you to Dewayne. If he dropped the expenses from two hundred and ninety thousand on to two hundred and fifty thousand, most of the time, we're looking at increases. So if we drop, you know, forty thousand dollars rather than having it go up, I think he should be committed on that.
And that's efforts since two thousand and eleven, those looking at his efforts.
And we're expecting it again this year. No, I'm kidding.
You know, I'd appreciate it, at least on my behalf, if you pass on, so...
Sure.
I would move to a turn.
Is there a second?
Go ahead, jump on.
I'll second that.
My motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Are there any comments? Call for a vote.
Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Brenney.
Yes.
Councilmember McGinty.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.